Ask you to stay seated after I open up the meeting as I want to say something before we recite the pledge allegiance. It's seven o'clock, we have a quorum, and the meeting is now open. In light of what has happened in our cities last year, I want to comment about the history and the meaning of the pledge allegiance to the flag. It was created in 1892. Many immigrants were coming to America around this time, and the government needed something to bind them together, as they did not have a shared history. So they decided to use the pledge in hopes it would help bring them into the fold. In 1942, during the Second World War, America changed the way we held our hands when reciting the pledge. The reason was that the way we used to hold our hands was just like the salute to Hitler. Everyone knows that that salute's character had been cultivated in a negative way by the Nazis, and in 1942, we went to putting our hands over our heart, and so it is still today. Countries need symbols, heroes, artifacts, and America's no different. Things that we identify with that made us a country is invested in our flag. With this tremendous amount of meaning, we give our respect for all the people that had built this great country, fought for it, and died for it. By standing and facing the flag when we recite the pledge. So please, stand, put your hands on your heart, face the flag, and join me in this great country for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what's gonna happen now is we need approval of the minutes.
And I think you have three sets of minutes, is that correct?
Three, a work study and two of the meetings in December.
Yeah, two meetings and a work study.
Okay, are those the minutes you were showing me?
No, this will be a separate set that you will sign at the end of the meeting.
All right, so we'll sign that at the end of the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from the work study.
I'll second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Courtney, can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Next on the agenda is a public comment.
No, two more minutes.
Two more minutes.
We'll need two more minutes approved, I'm sorry. We'll need to approve two more sets of minutes.
One more, okay, two more?
Two more, yes, sir. Two council meetings if I'm not wrong.
Yes, sixteenth and the thirtieth.
I move to approve the minutes of the town council meeting of the sixteenth.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Courtney, can you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
The motion's been passed five to zero.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting on the thirtieth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you take the roll, please?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed five to zero, thank you. Public comment.
Mr. President, I have one request to speak from Linda Monk. Her address is 396 North Indiana Street, and she would like to speak to the council about snow removal on sidewalks.
Please come up and speak to the microphone, ma'am. Thank you.
Linda Monk, 396 North Indiana Street, and I come-
Ma'am, can you pull that microphone down to you?
Yeah, how's that? Is that better?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks for listening. Twice in 2015, I came before the council to talk about adopting an ordinance, a possible ordinance for snow removal on sidewalks in the town. I grew up in Wisconsin, and that's just a no-brainer up there, you just have to smash over your sidewalks. There was research done at the time, and it ultimately decided there to not be any action on taking an ordinance. With the adoption of your new sidewalks and pathway program and the fact that the town is growing, I wanted to bring it up, since I was gonna be here tonight anyway, bring it up again, just to reiterate the fact that the larger the town gets, the more sidewalks we have, the more pathways we have. That's wonderful, and I am just a huge proponent of those things. I think we need to be able to navigate everywhere in this town without having to depend on a car. But, in the winter, if those things aren't cleared, they become a hazard, and people end up walking in the road again anyway. So I'm not asking you tonight to, you know, adopt an ordinance or anything like that, but just to put it back in everybody's mind that I think it's a huge issue. Even around the town square, we have businesses that don't remove snow during the winter. I also understand the DPW does an amazing job with snow removal, and now they have a new person in charge, which maybe he can look at things a little bit differently. I know sometimes there's nowhere to go with the snow, and it gets piled up, and I understand that issue, but I just think it just needs to be addressed again and looked at, just for safety. People want to be able to get out and walk in all sorts of weather, and that's why I'm here, just to bring it up to everybody's attention again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure our new DPW person knows a lot about getting rid of snow, so might pick your brain a little bit.
And it's already an ordinance that businesses on the square have to remove their snow, don't they?
We couldn't find it anywhere.
No, really?
Nope.
Oh.
Yep, we could not find it anywhere. We had a similar complaint before I left. I don't know what I left for. I was gone for a while.
And we missed you. And we missed you a lot.
But we could not find any ordinance that covered that. We can discuss it with department heads that it applies to, and also, you know, we can do some research and find out what ordinances are out there. I think that there's probably a happy medium somewhere we can come up.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is voting for president and vice president. I'd like to say something before that. We're gonna do the voting a little bit different. So what's gonna happen is that everybody up here has a motion to nominate somebody that can, so you could have three nominations for president, and will we close it? Or we-
What I would do is open the nominations for president. At the time that there are no more nominations for president, you close the nominations, and then it's just voting on-
And then we'll go through the how many-
Each person that has been nominated.
You'll have to gavel it or just say it?
Nope, you just have to say it.
You have to gavel it?
No, you just have to say it.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you. So does everybody understand?
No, I have no clue.
Okay. So I'm gonna say I open the nominations for president.
All right.
You say somebody, you say, I say, all five of us.
All right.
Then we close it, and then we go in order and say, and vote.
Okay.
So Bob Smith, just no, Eddie, Sam.
I think-
Stops what we had last year.
Okay.
It takes me out of the loop of being president.
Yeah, and so just to make the record clear, and I will do this publicly, for Mr. Morgan, he had raised the issue last time, when we had the issue about the seconding that I was raising. I did not have my copy of Robert's Rules, and so I said that you could not execute the second. How manager indicated it was his understanding, a second wasn't needed in the case of a nomination. Mr. Morgan was right, I was wrong, and so it is on the record.
Yes.
We have our Robert's Rules of Order, and so that's why it's different this year.
My system's still somewhat delicate from the sickness. Could you not do that again? Thank you.
That's why Mark makes the big money.
Yeah.
Okay, I open up the nominations for president. Anybody wanna nominate? Anybody?
I wish to nominate Tom Pato to continue as president.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Chris Gerald for president.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. Courtney, we'll go in order. Take the roll call on Tom Pato.
Okay, Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
David Winters. Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
It's four to one. President's been elected. Thank you. Same thing for vice president. I'm gonna open up the meeting, and I'll take nominations for vice president. I nominate David Winter for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Greg Van Leer.
Okay, nominations are closed. Now we'll take the nominations in order of how we set them.
Greg Van Leer.
This is for David Winter.
For David, okay. Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Okay, David Winter has been elected as vice president. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is department liaisons. What I would like to do is leave everybody in the place they are now. I feel they get to know the department better in four years than in one, and so whatever your liaison affiliation is, we'll stay with that this year.
Just for the record, Mr. President, I believe Parks is David Winters. Fire is Chris Gerald. Police is Nancy Levitt. Utilities is Greg Van Leer. No, I apologize.
Public Works.
Okay, Greg has, okay, Greg has Public Works, I apologize, Greg.
Oh, you're fine.
Do you have Utilities, Mr. Pato? Do you have the Utilities then?
Sure, yes.
All right. So there you have it. Thank you. That's just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Next is number four, 2020 meeting dates.
So, Mr. President, before you is a master list, if you wanna call it that, of all of our meeting dates for 2021. We have had a couple of corrections since the production of this list. First and foremost, on the design review committee, we had a September 6th date, which we need to change to September the 7th due to a town holiday. And then the park board, and I have not made this revision, but I will on final draft, we showed it as 5:30 PM, but it actually starts at 6:00 PM. But the dates are all the same, they will not change.
That's the paper you just gave us?
Yes. And once you make the approval with those changes, tomorrow I'll get these sent out for press, for notification for the calendar year. We find it easier to go ahead and make a mass advertising instead of trying to advertise each week.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion-
Would like to make a comment about that?
I'd make a motion that we approve the meeting schedule with the amendments to it.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Courtney, can you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Very much.
Next, board appointments, planning commission.
Mr. President, the plan commission has two positions that are appointed annually. They're both town council members. Currently, Tom Pato and Greg Van Leer have been assigned to the plan commission, and these are actual council appointments, so it will be the entire council that will make these recommendations.
So exactly how do we do this? We make nominations for it? I, as a president, have to be on that anyways, correct?
No, there's no requirement that the executive has to sit on the plan commission, it's just two representatives from the town council will sit there, and so you can do it one of anyways. You can take nominations, or you can ask if anybody is interested to do it and come up with a slate that way, and then have that approved.
Sure.
So however you want to organize that, that's fine, or you can-
No, I'd like to ask them. Greg, are you interested?
I'd like to continue on the plan commission, please.
Nancy, are you interested? Planning commission?
Not greatly interested.
Dave, are you interested?
Um.
Seventy-nine dollars a hit.
Are you hurting my-
Make a thousand bucks for the year.
Oh, Chris.
Okay, well, we have two. Do we have to take a motion?
Yeah, so it has to be approved by them.
Individually motioned?
Probably together.
Because I, we just do it as-
All those in favor of appointing Councilmen Van Leer and Gerald as the representatives to the plan commission, and you can vote on that altogether as one.
I move that the two seats that are open for the plan commission, for council members be filled by Greg Van Leer and Chris Gerald.
Second, have motion.
We have a motion and a second. Can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed five to zero, thank you. Okay, the BZA.
Mr. President, BZA has one position that came open at the end of 2020. It's currently held by Gary Aiken, a former town manager, and he is interested in serving again.
Do I just appoint that, or we'd have to make a motion?
That is a council president appointment.
Okay, I'll let Gary stay there.
All right.
Redevelopment commission.
Mr. President, the redevelopment commission has three appointments by yourself, council president, two appointments by the town council, another appointment by the council president, which is not up for re-elect term at this time, which is Dr. Schaefer from the school. On your council president appointments, they are Jerry Vorholt, Gary Aiken, and David Glover. In speaking with these individuals, Mr. Glover and Mr. Aiken are both interested in continuing to serve. Mr. Vorholt is not interested in continuing to serve. However, we have asked him, we have no replacement for him at this time, no one applied for that position. Mr. Vorholt would like to stay on until we can find a replacement for him.
All right, so we'll just carry on with the way it is until we find a replacement.
Yeah, so if you do not make a replacement, then that person continues on until that time occurs, and so if he's willing to sit, then that works out well.
So do I have a motion to approve that-
These are actually your appointments.
It's my appointment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll leave it run as it is, and we'll wait for a candidate.
What I would do is I would specifically appoint Gary Aiken and David Glover, and then just not appoint the seat for Jerry Van-
Vorholt.
Vorholt, because he'll have to continue to serve.
All right, do you want me to do that as a group or individually?
No, that's your, that's your thing, so you can say that you're gonna appoint those two.
Alls you have to do is appoint Mr. Aiken and Mr. Glover back to the redevelopment commission.
Yep. I appoint Mr. Aiken, Mr. Glover, and Jerry Vorholt temporarily until we find a replacement.
The next two positions are actual council appointments. Ben Comer is one of them, a local real estate lawyer, and he has indicated that he is definitely interested in serving again, and then the other is a council member, which, Mr. Pato, you currently serve in that position.
On the park board?
Redevelopment commission.
Commission.
Oh, okay, there it is. All right. Is anybody interested in the redevelopment commission?
Mark, is that a, is that a position for the executive of the board, or is that can be filled by anyone?
As far as I know, it's any person on the board.
Thank you.
Nobody wants it, I'll take it. Okay, I'll take it.
It will require a vote since it's a council appointment.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ben Comer and Tom Pato to the redevelopment commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can you take the roll, please?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
The motion's been passed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Park board.
President, the park board has two open positions, one for a Republican and one for a Democrat. Actually, it has three if you consider the school board's appointment, the school board does that appointment themselves. I have talked with Dr. Schaefer and Elizabeth Whitaker. I believe that it's going to be their consensus that she will continue to serve. The position of a Democrat, we only received one application, that was Bill Sutton. This is your appointment, Mr. President, so we can deal with the Democrat first, and then we can talk about the Republican position.
All right, I nominate Bill Sutton for the Democrat. Do I have a motion? Do we need a-
You won't need one, it's your appointment.
Okay.
The next one is the Republican appointment. Linda, is that right? Linda Monk, who has appeared before you tonight, has requested, has submitted an application, and then Jim Piercy, who is currently serving on the board, has indicated that he is interested in continuing to serve as well. So you do, you do have two Republicans vying for the same position, and again, this is your appointment.
Okay, I appoint Jim Piercy.
Thank you.
Next is the EMS joint board.
Yes, sir. Gotta pull it up, sorry. Okay. EMS joint board is a board comprised of center township, the town of Danville, and then one other alternative person. It currently, center provides their own, we're getting to it.
That's it.
Down, down farther. Keep going down.
It's not there.
No, keep going down, there's nothing there we have to do.
Oh, okay, that's more.
Yep. Keep going down.
EMS.
There you go, okay. So center township points their own people. The fifth person is actually elected by the board, so once this board is convened between the two Danville and two center township persons, the fifth person is usually elected to serve on that board. For several, several, several years, it's been the Mary Township trustee. Right now, the two current representatives for the town are Chris Gerald and David Winters. These are council appointments, and they're done annually. The board meets quarterly.
Are these my appointments as well?
No, sir, these are council as a whole approval, or appointments.
Okay, is anybody interested in the EMS joint board? Chris Gerald is.
I don't like that.
David Winter is.
We need a motion then?
We will need a motion and a second.
I move that we keep Chris Gerald and David Winters on the EMS board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Courtney, please?
Yes. Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed.
The next board up, would you like me to do this, Mr. President? I'm sorry, I don't wanna overstep my authority.
Yeah.
Okay. The next board that's up is the Hendrix County Economic Development Partnership. This is a yearly appointment by the council as a whole. Currently, Mr. Van Leer serves on this board.
And I'm interested in staying on that board.
I'd like to nominate Greg Van Leer for the Hendrix County Economic Development Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Courtney, would you like to?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. President, the next board that's up is the solid waste board. This is a-
Mark, they changed their name to the Hendrix County Recycling District.
It's now called the Hendrix County Recycling District? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. We'll make those revisions. That's so funny. Currently, it's a yearly appointment by the council, meets quarterly, and the current representative for the council is Chris Gerald.
If it's appointment by council, I nominate that we keep Chris Gerald on the recycling-
District.
District.
Second.
No.
I have a motion and a second for Chris. Take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
And what's it called again, Mr. Gerald?
Hendrix County Recycling District.
Hendrix County Recycling, thank you. District, right? Good. Yeah, I'll get that changed tomorrow.
Thank you.
Does that spell fertilizer?
Better than solid waste.
The next board is the Hendrix County Communications Board. Again, this is a yearly appointment by the council. Currently serving on that board is Nancy Levitt.
And I'm interested in staying on that board.
I'm Nancy Levitt for the Hendrix County Communications Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Nancy. Take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Nine, Citizens Water Advisory Board.
Currently, the Citizens Water Advisory Board, you've assigned, it's a council appointment, you've signed Matt Ellison, our water superintendent, to serve on this board. I have not spoke with Matt to see if he has interest. Of course, Will has. Again, I was sick. And so Will has spoke to him, and he's interested in continuing to serve.
I'd make a motion that we approve Matt Ellison for the Citizens Water Advisory Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can we please take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you. Tree Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir, the next board is your tree advisory committee. This is a three-person board. These are all council appointments. The three current members have all expressed interest in continuing to serve. It's Denny Jacks, Jeff Martin, and Sarah Wolf.
So they all wanna stay. Do we do them individually, or we bulk them in?
Bulk, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we keep the three Tree Advisory Committee members on.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Please take the role.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Chamber of Commerce Representative.
The Chamber of Commerce Representative is a, I believe it's a one-year or annual, it's an annual appointment by the council. It's my understanding that the Chamber of Commerce is not very happy with the representative they have.
It's obvious.
No, no, not at all. Mr. President, I'd be happy to continue to serve as the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce for the town.
Okay. We have a motion to keep Mark in.
I'll make a motion to select Mark Morgan for our Chamber of Commerce Board.
And I'd be honored to second that.
I have a motion in a second. Please call the role.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you. Downtown Partnership.
Again, these are yearly appointments by the council itself. I have to be honest, I've not spoke with Will to see his interest in continuing. Currently, Chris Gerald and Will Lacy serve as our liaisons to the Downtown Partnership. As you all know, they're undergoing some changes this year. So, like I said, I haven't talked with Will or Chris to see if either one. Chris, I seem to think is good, Will seems to be good. It's up to you guys.
So, everybody wants to stay?
I'd make a motion that we approve Will and Chris for the Downtown Danville Partnership.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second, please call the role.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you. Citizens Advisory Board.
Citizens Advisory Board handles complaints about waste management and the landfill itself. To my knowledge, I can't think that this board's ever been convened. I'm not saying it hasn't, but I don't have any knowledge directly of it. Waste Management appoints one person, which is usually is the facilities manager, which is Justin Buster this year, I believe, so. But then we have four appointments that are yearly. Looks like one of our appointments is a council representative. And then, three other appointments are council as a whole. We do have one other person who has requested to serve on that board. His name's Fred Harris, you probably recognize Fred comes in to our meetings quite a bit. He's pretty active, he enjoys coming to our meetings. Mr. Pato, I don't know if you've spoke to any of the other?
I spoke to Mr. Glover, and he would step down and I would put in Fred Harris for his position.
It is a council appointment, so you can do it. Jewel, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they can appoint the three, Mr. Gerald, Mr. Phillips, and Ms. Cherry, but then they'll have to do a separate for Mr. Harris then? There you go.
So we need a motion then?
For the three, and then a motion for the one.
I move that we retain Chris Gerald, Jim Phillips, and Beth Cherry as Town Council Representatives on the Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay. I have a motion in a second, please call the role.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you.
Then you'll need to make a motion for Mr. Harris to take Mr. Glover's seat.
I'll make a motion to add Fred Harris in place of Dave Glover.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, please call the role.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed five to zero, thank you.
It may be hard to believe, but that concludes all of our board and commission appointments for 2021. I don't know that we went quite this fast last year.
No.
All right, we got C. Conflict of Interest Forms, Clerk Treasurer.
Clerk Treasurer, she does not recall that any of you have any conflict of interest with the town, that you're not doing business with the town or anything like that. So, it was her belief that these forms probably would not be needed since, again, none of you do any business with the town. She is going to do some research. If she finds that you do need them, she will send them out to you for a return signature. Same way with the, if I can move on to D, she's advised me that she will send you the nepotism forms for your signatures, and then you'll just return them.
Okay, thank you. So there's no conflict between Danville Dips and all the staff? Because I think they're doing a lot of business with Danville Dips.
Well.
Personally, I've been dipping a two or one.
I understand, but you're going to do that, you're going to have to include the FIDELTS and some other things. I mean, what hill do you really want to die on, if you know what I'm saying?
Moving on.
Yes, sir.
There you go, I put a plug in for Danville Dips, it's amazing. Nepotism Wrap the Town Event?
Go ahead and take this, Mr. President. Jerry Vornholm reached out to me, he was contacted by the Art Department again this year. We will need the approval of the council to conduct this. I've talked with Superintendent of Public Works, kind of filled him in on the event. We'll try and fill him in a little bit more, that, you know, we'll require some banners and things like that that they put out. Explain to him that it was a feel-good thing for the town. We're looking at February, so we'll have plenty of time before we do the military banners and everything else, so we should be, there should be no conflict there. But they had reached out, and I told them I'd put them on the agenda and let you guys decide if you wanted to do the Wrap the Town Event like we did last year.
I think it's a really, it's a really nice event. And this year, they want to wrap the light posts.
Oh, is that what they're wanting to do?
That's what it says here.
Okay. Yeah, I don't remember if I sent you the email, or, okay, apparently that's what it says.
Everybody's pretty happy with that?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we have a consensus?
We have to, we need a motion, right?
Need a motion.
Says consensus here.
And?
Oh, it says seeking general consensus.
So we have a general consensus.
Okay. And, I mean, you're welcome to ask Public Works Superintendent his thoughts, if you like, it's up to you. Or you can tell him this is how things are going to roll. Welcome to Danville.
Andy, do you have any input?
All right, seems to be a goer. Everybody's generally consensused. Capital Expenditure Request.
I'm going to let Chief Roberts take this. I started it, and like with everything else with the Fire Department, I'm going to let him finish it.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, I have a capital expenditure request form for $56,000 coming out of the host fund. This will finish the octocoms on the stoplights for emergency vehicles. And the prices went up a little bit, it's about $12,000 per intersection. And I did reach out to the state today on that interlocal agreement, and I've not received a call back yet. But usually, I ask for $25,000 a year. We did not request any funding last year, and 20 for this, so I'd like to do the 20 and 21, and go ahead and complete the project.
Does this cover all the intersections that you think need these?
Yes. And this covers not only Fire Department apparatus, but the Sheriff's Department has the admiters. All Hendricks County ambulances have the admiters, so when they're coming into Hendricks Hospital, they're not having to stop at these stoplights when they're running emergent.
Is there a fraction that they will be assisting with the cost associated with these?
No, because they have them in their community, and we?
But they are part of our community.
So we use them in their community, they use them in ours.
So yours work in Avon, or?
So why couldn't we get this in the budget? Is this something that would go into the budget?
This is something that has always been in the host fund priority projects. When this was introduced, there was, we had no budget for this, this would truly, the Fire Department doesn't have a new equipment budget, there's no, there's no real budget for something of this nature. This became a quality-of-life issue when we realized that it would make a reduction in wrecks for our fire trucks, our ambulances, the police cars that come through the intersections. So that's why it was actually introduced into the host fund. I can't remember how many years ago I introduced it, it's had to have been five, maybe six years. Yeah, so that's why it was introduced as a host fund project.
So can we, next year, put it into, give them an equipment budget?
This will be the last he'll need of them, if I'm not mistaken.
The only thing I will need from this point forward is just maintenance. And it wouldn't be $25,000 a year.
Is there like a monthly fee, or some type of fee ongoing?
No.
Something that we thought about putting in our police cars as well?
Uh, yes.
It'll be a whole new expenditure.
Hilton can leave the room for a minute.
Right, Mark, never mind.
Yeah, I know, I have to be careful.
You know, I'd love to have this come out of my budget, my budget's only $84,000 a year, so.
His entire operating budget.
I believe we have the host budget coming before us soon, correct?
That's correct.
You think it's something that we should take a look at in that budget?
I've got a, yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty big number. If you don't mind me asking, because I think these are good, I think this is a good idea, I mean, safety is obviously. For these intersections, are there a lot of incidents, either of actual accidents, or where things are, you know, emergency vehicles are held up because they can't get through?
Yes, we've had some close calls. And we've came through, and behind us, people have wrecked.
Oh.
As we came through. We didn't cause the wreck, they just weren't paying attention. And so I feel this is a safety priority for the town, and that this will complete all the intersections.
Usually what will happen, and again, this is just from my experience in watching these post-intersection crashes where the trucks have gone through, without the sensor, you know, we may be going against a red light, which, you know, we go through with caution. Well, as soon as we're through the intersection, the people that had the green light are going to start barreling through, and there may be somebody who thought, well, I'm going to follow that fire truck through. I'm not saying it's not, they're at fault, but you see what we're saying. The octocoms give the right-of-way to the emergency vehicle and make the other two sides stop.
I think I tend to agree with Greg that, you know, it's probably something that we need to do, but it's a big enough expenditure that with the meeting I think we're going to schedule pretty soon, maybe we can have that discussion in that meeting.
Is the, got it down here to start a work study for the end of the month?
I have it as February 3rd or 7th.
February 3rd.
Okay, that's fine. So there's a host fund work study at February 3rd?
There is.
Okay.
I believe the Clerk Treasurer's called for it.
Do we have a time set and everything?
5:30, I believe.
Okay.
So I guess that means we're tabling this until after that time? Is that right?
That's fine.
I understand.
So anybody want to make a motion?
Rob, how long does it take to order those and get those in? Do you know?
I think last time it was a couple months.
I'm of the mind that we just go ahead and get this ball rolling tonight, because it's pretty basically important to the town. I, personal anecdote, the one and only time I ever had to go to the hospital, I fainted at home, and my kids freaked out, called the ambulance, and this was so long ago that we came up to the first stoplight on the square, and it was red, and so they just had to stop. And I just thought it was so weird, and it was late at night, and I said, why aren't the lights flashing? They used to, at late at night, they used to just flash yellow, you know, and you could just go through. Well, you know, he said, nope, they changed them, so they're on all the time now. And so, you know, here I am in an ambulance, and we're just waiting for the stupid red light to change. Thought that was kind of?
And Nancy's brought up a good point. If you're doing CPR in the back of an ambulance, and you're running 40 mile an hour, and from me to you, that light changes, you got people standing up in the back of the ambulance trying to do CPR, and you're throwing them all over the back of the ambulance itself. And it's not only for safety for the public, it's for safety for our personnel.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the capital expenditure request for the octocom.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second? Take the role, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Traffic Study, 200 East.
Mr. President, members of the council, if you recall, earlier this summer, we reduced the speed limit of County Road 200 East to 30 miles per hour, because that's what the state law allowed us to do without having any type of study or anything like that. Since then, we've had numerous complaints that 30 miles per hour is way too slow for that roadway. We've had requests to increase to 40 miles an hour. I've spoke with a traffic engineering company, and they can do the study for $1,200. I've spoke with Mrs. Piercy, and that would come out of General Fund, Professional Services, so it would not come out of Host or Edit or anything like that. And so I'm seeking consensus to move forward with this tonight.
I've had several people talk to me, they thought it was crazy to slow down to 30, then speed back up, and I think it's a good thing. Any other comments from the board? Do we have a motion to pass the funding for a traffic study?
I'll make a motion to approve the funding for the traffic study at 200 East. Second.
I have a motion in a second, you want to take the role?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll contact them tomorrow to get that started.
You're welcome. Ordinance 34, 2020, text amendment. Lisa.
Good evening. What you have before you tonight are four text amendments for the zoning ordinance, and I'll briefly go through what those are. The very first one is under Scope of Regulations, which is in Chapter 1. What it is, is if someone annexes into the town of Danville, they go to a default zoning of RE1. And what this will do is allow them to keep the zoning that they have under the county's jurisdiction, but it will also be reviewed by the administration, so that we're not putting a zoning that should not be in a place, you know what I'm saying? So if they're next to a residential, and it's industrial or something like that, it allows the administration to change that if it needs to be. The second one is under Prohibited Signs. Right now, we allow banners across right-of-way, and what this will do is, let's see, they get removes it, let me get my paper, yeah. And then, so it will take that out, so that banners cannot be across right-of-way alleys or streets. The third one is for public, it's public events, temporary signs for public events. Right now, we allow banners across 36 and at Ellis Park, and that completely will be removed. Then the last one is under Public Notice for Public Hearings. We require right now that someone do notice by certified mail, and we're wanting to change that to a certificate of mailing. It still is stamped by the post office, so you know when the letters are getting mailed out to prove that they're meeting their timelines, but the cost of certified letters have gone up so much, and it's really, it's really expensive. So those are the four amendments. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on December the 14th, and they have sent a favorable recommendation to the council for adoption. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'm curious, so this will eliminate that banner that hangs over 36 coming in?
Yes.
I just share this, I know, I think a year was before this council, I think there was a discussion about stopping that, and when people, I wasn't on yet, but they were asking, they were telling me, I heard from a lot of people, they really love that, because that's one of those small-town, you know, really neat things to see when you're coming in and seeing the event advertised there, so, for whatever that's worth, I thought I'd share that.
Well, I'm not saying we won't revisit this.
Okay.
However, the current poles that are utilized for it are in such terrible condition, we thought the safety measure alone was worth us doing this right now.
Okay.
I was looking at Plainfield's poles the other day, they've actually got nice big metal, you know, poles there that are, they are designated for that banner, there's no other utilities attached to it, no nothing, and right now, we're using utility poles on one side and another pole on the other. Like I said, you can see it outside my office, that thing's tilted down like this, it's got a real lean to it. And what we looked at, quite honestly, was, is in the event that something were to occur, and that thing would break, who becomes liable?
You have a bigger problem on our hands, yeah.
Especially if a motorcyclist or somebody's going underneath it.
Sure. Okay.
And also, some of this was prompted by the Ellis Park variance for the electronic message board. They approved that, but they approved it with a condition to remove some of the event signs that are posted at the park and some of the other places. So that's what prompted that.
And, and most generally, an ordinance would either require suspension of the rules or two reads. Because this was done through the Plan Commission with a public hearing, tonight you can vote on this at ordinance.
Do we have to suspend the rules?
No. Okay.
Everybody has said their comments? Do I have a motion to approve? 34, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 34, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you like to take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been approved five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next we have claim dockets.
I apologize that I don't have a report for you tonight. I wasn't real attentive during the department head meeting, if you know what I'm saying. So you've got a majority of them here. I don't know if any of them have anything they'd like to say or, I think they're all good. I think they've gotten used to me being their mouthpiece.
Sorry, we discounted you there. I'm glad you stuck.
But I really don't have anything. I apologize.
I figured that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to have Mark.
He's got to find another colored shirt, I think.
I'm not sure I share his sentiment, but he's nice.
Yeah, well, it's good to see you up and about, Mark.
Thank you very much.
And all the rest of you people that have been under the weather. All right. So the claim docket thing was...
I guess I have, I, I just wanted to say that I appreciate being reappointed to the same committees because it's been, it's been a long year of building relationships, and I know each of us have been doing that. And to be able to continue that cohesiveness in those roles, I think, you know, plays a, a strong and important part. Over the last couple of weeks since we had met, I had participated in a couple of other town meetings, and everything continues to move smoothly on those. I did have a quick question for council, if I may. You came very well-prepared this evening for a change in the fundamental structure of, of our election of officers. When were you informed of, of this change?
So, I guess the question, let me see if I was, understand your question correctly. You're asking when I knew that the...
The organization of the council was, was going to be in a different format?
Well, it is really the following of the Robert's Rules of Order. So what Mr. Pato did was he asked me what the proper procedure was, because we had such a long process last time. And so I said I would revisit it, I would look into it. And so actually, Caitlin's the one who sat there and read through Robert's Rules again. And so she pulled that out.
And then, and then did you inform the entire council of, of this procedural change prior to the meeting?
I told Councilman Pato when I walked in today that the Robert's Rules indicates that it, you don't need a second.
Okay, I understand. Okay. As a change like that were to occur, I, I guess, you know, maybe if we could all just be on the same page on, on what that, what that change is and how it would affect us. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
The only thing I have is that I want to definitely revisit the banner across 36 because I, that's a really cool banner. I really like the new sign in the park, but as you're coming up that hill, it's really, you know, it really looks good. But I do agree that it's very dangerous right now. And they shouldn't be, you know, we shouldn't take that risk. But someday when we have the extra money...
That'll be, at, at your discretion, I'll be, I'll, I'll make that happen.
Thanks, Mark.
No, I don't have anything.
I heard you, Jim. I don't have any.
I don't have any other.
I did have one thing to add, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Will and the staff for truly keeping everything going while I was out. They were in touch with me and, and kept me informed of everything. I did the best I could of, of corresponding back, and it, it confirms that I believe we have some of the best staff around, and, and I appreciate everything everybody did, truly do. Thank you.
We're glad, we're glad you're back, for sure.
Thank you.
You are. So now we can do the claim dockets.
Happy New Year. I'd make a motion to approve the claim docket.
Second.
Would you like to take a roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. You'll have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Everybody in favor? Close. Thank you.